Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 26th meeting of the City Council on Redevelopment Agency. If you please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First out, I'm on our agenda this evening as changes to the order of agenda. Any changes from the council, staff? Then the agenda stands as submitted. Council Communications and Announcements. I'd like to begin by a bit of sad news. Our former police chief, Cliff Gerst, died yesterday. Many of you in the audience, as well as at home, will remember Cliff. He served the city of San Carlos in the Police Department and as police chief. In fact, he spent all of his 31 years here, his 31 years of law enforcement here in San Carlos. He served as chief for seven years. And while he was here, he presided over our community policing program. He worked hard on initiatives such as the DARE program and the citizens' police academy and general crime prevention issues in the business community. He was also well-involved with the residents and with the community itself. He was a member of the San Carlos Rotary Club and the Peninsula Police Officers Association, the San Mateo House Club, and was very involved with hometown days. So Cliff has passed on. We remember him fondly. There will be a vigil at 7:30 on Thursday, March 29, at St. Bartholomew's Church, which is at 300 Almina de los Pogos in San Mateo, and a funeral mass is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. Friday, March 30. The funeral will also take place at St. Bartholomew's. So we sympathize with his family, his wife, and his children, all of his friends, and we will close our meeting tonight in memory of Cliff. So with that, let me pass it back to the council. Matt, any reports?
A couple things. By the way, just anecdotally, councilmember Versili and I, I remember, attended a luncheon for the retirement of three of our police officers a while back, and Chief Gerst was there, and you could tell that all the officers going up shaking his hand, patting him on the back and so forth. He was a well-liked officer and chief. First thing I wanted to start with is we did have a special meeting of the Fire Board this afternoon, councilmember Versili and I, and we have now approved a JPA agreement, and that'll be coming to our attention, I suppose, at our first meeting in April. Is that right? So we do have an agreement that's been approved 4-0 by the Board, and it'll come to the council. The, I wanted to report, I had gotten an email and some pictures and so forth from Sam Hirschberg in the L'Oriola neighborhood, pointing out a pretty bad traffic accident that happened on Old County Road near the spur, the railroad spur. And so he was asking if the city staff could do anything to look at that situation and some of the road conditions there, including the spur. I don't know if the JPB would be interested in taking that spur out or not, but there's apparently some other conditions with both spur and the way it crosses the road, a sewer cover, and some other things, and he asked that be looked at, so I just wanted to report on that.
Okay. And last thing was, I think we've, many of us may have received this, I think we
did an email from Bonnie Howitzin about the fields, and I think if we could just provide some reassurance, I guess there's folks that are still concerned about selling of parkland to fund this, and my recollection was we specifically to Chilton Park had decided not to even entertain that idea, although we didn't take it off the table as a policy decision globally because of whatever reason we had at the time. I don't remember the full discussion on that. And then she was also asking when the meeting is scheduled for, for that item, so I don't know if you'd want to say anything about that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, it's, Chilton is off the table as far as I'm concerned. That was part of our discussion. The issue, of course, now is with Heather, and that will be coming to us either at the next meeting or the one after in terms of the consulting services and the preferred turf for that field. But I think as far as Bonnie's concerned and others are concerned with the Chilton Park, they can consider it to be off the table and not a part of our discussion for parks and ride.
Very good. And that was my memory as well. Thank you.
Mr. Versili.
A couple things. On Wednesday, I was able to, or privileged, should I say, to work with a group called the Peninsula Volunteers, and they handled the Meals on Wheels in San Mateo County. And it was Mayor's Day. Mayor Davids could not be there, so he asked me to stand in for him, and we had six mayors of the cities of Atherton, East Palo Alto, actually seven, Atherton, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Potola Valley, Redwood City, San Carlos, and Woodside, delivered meals to their cities and to seniors in their cities. And I mentioned to the folks when I was there that I wanted to make sure that people, especially our seniors, knew about this program. Peninsula Volunteers runs it. Every day, meals are delivered, Monday through Friday, should I say, or meals are delivered by volunteers to those parts of southern San Mateo County in those cities. And I have a phone number, and I wanted to make sure that I got that out. It's 650-323-2022 if anyone's interested in having the service for themselves or for friends or someone they know, or if they want to volunteer. They can always use Volunteers in this program. And it was a very nice thing. We went to a couple of seniors in San Carlos, myself and Linda Drew, who's a Volunteer, Whitman is a Volunteer, and it was just a terrific situation. And so I know Councilman Grocott did it last year. In fact, his picture is on the cover of the brochure. So he did it last year, and it's a wonderful program, and I wanted to make sure that it was mentioned. The second thing I wanted to mention tonight is sort of a personal thing in a way. We have a person in the audience whose birthday it is this week, and this person comes to our meetings religiously, and I wanted to make sure that she had a happy birthday, and that's Kendra Bell. So I wanted to make sure she had a happy birthday, and we congratulate her on that.
Happy birthday, Kendra.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dougherty?
I just wanted to report on a joint city council school 2+2 committee meeting that Vice Mayor Lewis and I attended on March 9, along with school board members Tom Quigle and Carrie Dubois. And then we also had city staff and school district staff that were present as well. The focus of our discussion was really to start to understand a little bit better as we move forward with issuing the RFP for the renovation of some of the fields, including specifically Heather. If the school district per se had any specific requirements or anything that they were either adamantly opposed to or vehemently supported. And we covered such items as the field surface for Heather School specifically, whether it be grass or artificial turf. We talked about some of the benefits and some of the drawbacks of artificial turf versus grass. We also talked about terms of the lease. Heather School is one of the few schools that we actually do have an actual lease agreement for use of that field. The rest are covered under our JPA agreement that we do have with the school district. And we talked a little bit about terms and length of the lease. We also talked a bit about the hours, where if we were to make the investment in Heather School, if we'd be limited by the number of hours that we could use those fields or city programs could use those fields. And essentially, we're, you know, basically, the school day goes until about 3:00, which most of the youth programs obviously don't start their practices until after about 3:30, so there seemed to be some synergy there. And then also talked about any kind of anticipated schedule or challenges with that. They just requested that whichever way we go, if indeed we're going to choose to make some renovations at Heather, that we don't have any earth-moving, heavy earth-moving equipment during class hours and things like that. So it doesn't necessarily need to be just construction during the summertime, which I think most of us assumed generally was the course of things like that. And then we also discussed, just briefly, some of the athletic field usage at some of the other school sites and what might be available in the future. Again, the school board did confirm the council's position, which is either way, they would not be supportive of lights at Heather, which is very consistent with city council's position, and that obviously, given their funding challenges, that they certainly would like to see some improvements done at any of their school sites that might support our city's youth. So overall, a very good meeting. We're going to have a follow-up meeting on Friday, May 25, 8:15 in the morning, in Room 207 here in City Hall. And we'll continue the discussion and then also talk about some other types of things. We do some facility sharing with the school district as well for some of their other facilities besides athletic fields. And then we'll also get an update from them on they're looking at a potential school parcel tax measure in 2008, and that would refund the one that is due to sunset, I believe. It's 2009, 2010?
Yes.
It seems to me. So they rely quite heavily on that money right now to fund some of the programs that are not currently funded through the funding that they get from the state. So if people are interested, I'm sure this will, the agenda will be posted in City Hall or online, but please feel free to join us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
Let me continue with a couple more. I had an opportunity to welcome the students who were part of our Youth and Government Day. We had roughly 20, maybe 22 students, and they spent the day at City Hall, had lunch with Assistant City Manager, I believe, and heard about the Wi-Fi program, and they got introduced to everything that's happening around the city. So they had a good time, and we all received a copy of the email responding to the question, "If you were mayor, what would be the first thing you would change in our city?" It had some rather interesting points of view and some things that we can take and give serious consideration to. So I want to thank the kids for doing that and for Jerry Fujimoto for putting that together. Another item is an update on the subregional housing needs process that we have been meeting. You recall, we put this group together as a part of a CK subgroup, and the purpose of the group is to allocate housing for the five-year term of our new housing master plan. And we have completed a review and a determination of methodology, and we now are in the process of negotiating what that final number may be. And based upon the ABAG number, which would be our number if we do nothing else, we would have a mandate of 834 units, which is twice what we had last time around. So the question of getting there is a bit problematic, but that's the way the numbers come out, and I'll keep you posted as to what any final outcome may be. And then finally, we had a meeting today of the Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Committee, another part of the City and County Governments Association. And the interesting part of this meeting was the discussion of the Dunbarton Rail Project. We've heard a lot about that over the years, the need and the concern for providing additional commute services and putting the Dunbarton Rail Crossing back in operation. The current problem is that they're having trouble with Union Pacific on the east side sharing tracks and coming to an agreement as to what the value of this commuter service may be. They've also experienced a bit of an increase in their budget. It started out at 300 million, and now it's 500 and some million, and so the cost has gone up. And they've encountered some problems with some of the neighborhoods near the train line. And so it's thrown them back a bit in terms of their planning and their progress, but they carry on, and they're hopeful that they can solve these problems in due time and continue with the Dunbarton Crossing. So that completes my announcements, and now we'll go to item number four, Reports to the Council. 4A is Discussion of Council Booth at Hot Harvest Nights, Farmer's Market. You have in your packet a memo on this from Mark, Vice City Manager, to the council. And as you know, during the last few years, we've had a booth at Farmer's Market, and we started out every week, and then we sort of went to every other week, and then it became difficult for staffing and for some council members to make their appointment. And what the Chamber wants us to do is to decide what we're willing to do and then stick to it. The problem is that they don't want an empty booth. They have eight booths down that section of Laurel Street, and they want to make sure they're all occupied, and they can rent any vacant booth as long as they know it's going to be vacant. So the proposal is that, we first of all discussed it, but the suggestion is that we perhaps adopt a Thursday of each month and agree to be there along with city staff. Suggestion is that we take the first Thursday of each month. So comments, suggestions?
Well, I guess I'll speak to this since I was the one that, that is not mine. Mine is turned off. So somebody down there at that table.
Their cellphone on, we're picking up.
Have a BlackBerry that's transmitting, and I apologize because it's not mine. What I was going to say is I think we should even open it up to, does it make sense to actually have an actual booth? Or, because originally, the whole idea was just to have it more of a town hall type of format where it was a coffee table or, you know, a card table sitting at the side with maybe some information about what was going on, in which case, that would be a whole lot easier and less cumbersome for staff as well as for, I think, council to kind of set up and organize and everything else. It would also free up an additional booth for the Chamber. So I would even throw out there, does it make sense to perhaps have the discussion about really, do we need an actual booth? Or is it, would it be appropriate to, you know, identify a location either in downtown park or sort of next to where the Chamber has their booth set up to have a table where, you know, council members could, people could come and talk to council members? I do think that there is merit, and I know that the times I've been in the booth, that the community really seems to enjoy the outreach from council as well as from staff. I mean, it's a good opportunity for them to get their questions asked, kind of in a one-stop kind of environment. But I'll, again, I would leave that open to my council members about what their thoughts are.
Anyone else?
Well, I think it's, I think it's a good idea that we do that. I certainly know what Mayor Davids was speaking to about scheduling. It's always difficult with the way we had it set up before, but if we pick one day where, once a month, I think then it gives us a lot more options, because then there's, if we have one member of staff and then one member of the council, I think we have a better opportunity. The only reason I think a booth might be better is because it's right there in the center. If we put it separate, there's so much traffic going by there, not that we're going to worry about getting lost, but I just don't know. We're still going to need signage. Somebody's going to have to have a sign somewhere, so. But if it's scheduled the first, or whatever Thursday it is, and everyone will know that it could be published and everything else, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, my two cents would be to do the five Thursdays. And I don't know about the first Thursday in the month just because we always, well, it doesn't really matter, I guess, too much. It's more advantageous for me later in the schedule, of course. But I think we could probably certainly get that scheduled, and I think it's great to have staff there, department there, so there's, create some synergy. Sounds like a good idea.
Matt?
I agree that I think we should have it. I like earlier in the month and later simply because county B-PAC is the fourth Thursday, I think, so to avoid that conflict.
So the first Thursday of the month is April 5?
It doesn't start in April, though.
Oh, it's May, I'm sorry. So that would be April 3. Anyone like to offer up for the first month? I'd be glad to do so.
I just need to check my travel schedule. I don't really want to throw my BlackBerry around right now.
Why don't I take the first month? I'll take April 3, and then we'll circulate.
May?
I'm sorry, May 3.
Do we?
I might be out there April 3, and there's no one around. I'll be wondering what's happening.
Do we want to do like we did last year, where we actually split it into, we didn't do the entire, starting at 4 and ending at, what was it, 7 or 8?
No, that's another situation. I neglected to bring that up. They would like us there from start to finish.
What Inga's saying is we could do a tag team.
Or split up.
Yeah, so that, you know, there'd be two shifts of someone, one of the early shifts. That would help accommodate, like Brad and I, and some of the later shifts.
As long as we're represented.
Yeah. I like that.
It's a good idea, because sometimes, like, we have a couple of meetings in, like, in May, I have a meeting like from 5 to 7, or I could maybe be late for that, so if there was a shift, then I could, you know, do that. Although it looks like in June I'd be free if we're scheduling. I'd like to volunteer for August and September.
After your movie is out, huh?
Well, we'll ask Christine to send out a schedule, and we'll fill in the blanks. Okay, so I think we're, there's consensus that we man the booth once a month, the first Thursday of the month, and that we team up with the department heads. They've suggested that on a five-month basis, they could cover administrative services and another week, community development, another week, please fire, that type of thing. So that'd allow them to get scheduled as well.
Do new staff members have to do all five of them?
You know, people haven't seen them around. This might be a good idea. Get them deeply into the community.
There you go.
All right, well, there's consensus on that. So let's move along to the next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a time when members of the public can address the council on any item not on the posted agenda. I don't have any speaker slips for this. Yes, I do, I'm sorry. Pat Bell, you're number five. Thank you.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. First, I was very pleased to be there today when the Fire Board voted for the new JPA, and I hope that it'll pass with, in record time, both councils, because we've been to an awful lot of meetings about this darn thing, and I'm just happy that four people have decided this is the way to go, and I think it is. The second thing, I want to urge you to support Fire Chief Fry's proposal that Belmont, San Carlos, and the Fire Department split the cost of a full-time disaster preparedness person, someone who only, who's hired to do that. Heidi Morrison has worked really hard to get San Carlos ready, but she also has other duties in the Fire, in the Police Department, and I think it would be great if we could have one full-time person who's an expert in that area and devotes his or her time to that full-time. And I think it's reasonable to split the cost between the three agencies, and that way it makes it affordable for each one, and we get top-notch service. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
Oh, on the subject of affordable housing, I think there is money to build affordable housing for people with developmental disabilities, so you might look into that as one way to meet your assigned number. There's a complex in Belmont that has been very successful, apartment complex, for people who live pretty much independently. They have one staff member in the complex in case somebody needs help with something or, you know, need some kind of support, but they're pretty much independent.
Good. Thank you. Scott Marsters?
My name is Scott Marsters, and I'm president of the L'Oriola Association, and I was here two weeks ago to talk about shuttles, and I'm here again today to talk about shuttles and ask if anything has been done, if you've decided to send it somewhere, whether you've given it to staff, whether there's any hope for us to get the issue dealt with. And the second thing that I would like to talk about is the same thing that Sam Hirschberg sent you a letter on, which is Old County. And I would ask that you, when you talk to staff about this, that you not just deal with that particular spur, but actually look at the entire length of Old County. If you look at Old County as it goes into Belmont, the speed limit is greatly reduced. If you look at the speed limit going into Redwood City, it's greatly reduced. We know there's speeding problems on Old County. The police are out there on a routine basis with signs. We know that there's actually 10 speed limit signs in each direction telling that the speed limit is 35 miles an hour. If you look at the same direction, same distance on Industrial, I think you'll find that there's less than half that number. I think there's problems with pedestrians crossing that street. We've had problems with it in the past. So when you look at Old County, I would ask that you not just look at the spur and the accidents, and by the way, that was the second accident, major accident, in five weeks on Old County. So there are problems with it, and I'd like to ask that you do something more than just look at the spur.
Thank you, Scott. We did discuss briefly after the last meeting and determined that this, the shuttle issue would be best resolved by our newly constituted Traffic Transportation Committee as they come together and meet, and the Old County Road, of course, is on their plate as well. So thank you for bringing those up, and keep your eye on them. We'll get back to you as soon as we can. Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Margaret Pye. I live in San Carlos. I'm currently serving on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, soon to be called the Transportation and Circulation Committee. Sounds like you've got some plans to give us some work to do. I am here to thank you for last year designating some money to be spent on a Safe Routes to Schools program, and I just wanted to let you know that we have some plans to actually have a Safe Routes to Schools presentation coming up on May 3 at White Oak School. It'll be from 7 to 9 p.m., and I would really like it if all of you could attend. We're trying to make it an exciting event to get kids excited about walking to school and biking to school. We would like people from the community to come as well. We think anybody who's interested in the health of children, anybody who's interested in traffic congestion, and just the betterment of the community ought to attend, see if they can pitch in and help us out with it. We don't know exactly where it's going to go. This is kind of a kickoff for brainstorming some ideas on encouraging kids to walk and bike to school and reduce the number of children being driven by motorized vehicles. So again, I wanted to thank you for designating the money because we're about to spend it, and hope some of you can attend the meeting on May 3. I'll be giving some more information in emails. Also, we're going to see if we can get the city to put an announcement on the city's website. White Oak School is going to have some publicity, so keep your eyes open, May 3, Thursday.
Do you know what time?
7 to 9 p.m.
All right. So we all circle your dates, and circle the date, and we'll try to rally a good crowd for you.
Right, thanks a lot.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, because Margaret is here and just mentioned that, at our countywide B-PAC meeting, one of the projects that we were looking at funding, and I believe it did get funding, was to put in video detection for bicycles in Menlo Park on certain intersections. And part of the reason for that was because of a program they have there, which I know Margaret has talked to us about before, the bicycle bus. And so I point that out because with Margaret's presence here, they might want to look at that as a demonstration of how that could get done and so forth. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And we'll move along on the agenda to item 6, which is Approval of the Consent Calendar. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. And if there is an item removed, we'll kick it to the back of the agenda and consider it as the last item. So, council?
Mr. Mayor, item C, 6C.
6C, okay. Any others, staff? Any others, staff? Any public would like to take anything off consent? All right, may we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I just wanted to note that a few corrections were made to the minutes, and they're in front of you. Just wanted you to note for the record.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion for approval of consent calendar on the minutes would be for the revised copy. All right, I would move approval of consent calendar items 6A, B, D, and 6E, which is adoption of ordinance 1384, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, sections 18.24.040, 18.28.040, 18.104.085, and 18.116.135 for the purpose of amending the Exception Design Control Committee residential design review requirements within the city of San Carlos.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teague, Dority?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes.
Item 7A is consideration of increasing residential and commercial solid waste recycling rates. City Attorney Lance Owen will...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, tonight is the night set for the Prop. 218 public hearing for the proposed increase in solid waste and recycling rates in the city. Notice was mailed approximately February 1st to all of the ratepayers. It proposed a 6% across-the-board rate increase effective January 1, 2007. The rates had not been increased since 2004. For a 32-gallon container, it went from 1507 to 1597. And as those rates would increase, take, for example, larger containers, of course, the 6% would mean more of an increase. We've received 10 protests, I believe.
Yes.
With respect to the increase, this is with, you know, 11,000 households and plus all of the commercial ratepayers as well, so that's the only, those are the only protests received.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open the public hearing, and at this point, we'll receive any additional protests that anyone would like to submit. Are there any members of the audience that would like to submit a letter of protest to the increased rates? Seeing none, we'll...
I would move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, Christine, we have how many protests?
10 letters.
We have 10 letters in protest, which obviously is not a majority. Therefore, we will proceed to approve the ordinance.
There's a resolution attached to your report.
All right. Is there a motion for the resolution?
I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-16, a resolution, I don't need to read this, but approving the increase in rates for solid waste, recyclable materials, and plant material collection.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dority. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Griselli. We have roll call.
Councilmember Dority?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Next item is item 7B, and 7B is a consideration of extension of the interim zoning ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for all new uses occupying tenant spaces of greater than 2,500 square feet within the 800 block of Laurel Street for a period of 10 months and 15 days. Mr. Savay?
Just before you begin, for the chair, Mark, would you mind catching the lights? Just dimming the lights a bit, makes it a bit easier for people to see, I think. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. A four-fifth vote is required to extend this ordinance, and at the March 12 council meeting, only three council members were here, and no vote would be taken. And looking at the map that's on the screen there, right now, we're talking about the 800 block of San Carlos Avenue, of Laurel Street, rather, and that's on the right-hand side in the, in the blue area. At that last meeting, the council did hear staff presentation and listen to public testimony, and there was a question-and-answer period as well, and the council continued this item to this meeting for your consideration. If the 10-month, 15-day extension isn't adopted this evening, then it stops, and the zoning will revert back to prior to the 45-day interim ordinance. Retail was a permitted use in the downtown. Therefore, any retail use could occupy vacant buildings in the downtown without any city review or discretion add to the appropriateness of the use. And just to provide a little more background about how we got to where we are today, on February 12, 2007, the city council adopted a 45-day interim ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for buildings that are over 2,500 square feet in the 800 block of Laurel Street. And the intent of the 10-month, 15-day extension is to provide the city time to study the Westside Specific Plan and the zoning regulations to address the occupancy of larger key tenant spaces in the 800 block of Laurel Street. There are several larger key tenant spaces in the 800 block of Laurel Street, and citizen committee efforts and economic development studies have documented the need for a sustainable, economically viable downtown core district, and current interest in one or more of the larger sites in the 800 block of Laurel Street as a closeout dollar retail store presents a threat to the land use and economic development opportunities in the downtown retail core. And thus, the recommendation is to recommend that the city council authorize the extension of the interim zoning ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for uses occupying tenant spaces of greater than 2,500 square feet within the 800 block of Laurel Street for 10 months and 15 days. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions of the mayor or council.
Any questions for Al?
I just, I appreciated the staff report, and I think you guys did a nice job just identifying the economic impacts of restricting use to, for the 2,500 square feet. But I think, in my mind, as I was going through this, it was really actually more thinking about consistency and compatibility with existing uses in our downtown, and it wasn't simply just an economic viability type of question, because I do think, very similarly to what we do with our design guidelines in our residential areas, we do those to keep San Carlos the, you know, the place that it is. So was there any thought given to sort of adding in something about compatibility of use to the, not necessarily to this ordinance, but I guess to a future, if we were to implement something like this on a longer-term or broader basis?
Yes, a couple of different things, unless the city attorney wants to add to it. The council could this evening add some language into the interim ordinance to that effect, suggesting that that's one of the things that the council wants staff to take a look at when it goes back for review of the Westside Specific Plan. So that's available to the council this evening. So the intent is to go back and look at the Westside Specific Plan, and specifically the ideas that you're talking about, where, what types of retailers, how is it, how do they coexist with other retailers and sizes of buildings in the 800 block? So those are the kinds of ideas that would be discussed and evaluated as part of the Westside Specific Plan.
I think my preference would be not necessarily to modify the emergency ordinance, but to kind of note that as something to look at for any kind of Westside Specific Plan updates. I do think that we should have compatibility, just in terms of uses there. I do know that, like when we considered, there was a retail establishment on San Carlos Avenue in the interim space, they did have to come and apply for a conditional use permit, and we did look very closely at the type of use and made sure that it was consistent with what we felt would be appropriate within our downtown corridor. So I don't think it's a new item. Thank you.
My only question is, will we have, I can't remember in our strategic retreat whether or not we said we'd be able to accomplish the Westside Specific Plan in 10 months and 15 days. So I guess part of this means that we're gonna, we need to make sure that we get through at least that portion of the general plan, if not a Westside Specific Plan, within this time period, so we get this addressed. So it just seems that it's a slight reorientation of some of the strategic goals that we've put out there. It's not inconsistent with them, don't get me wrong, but it certainly puts it on a different schedule, which is absolutely fine with me, but, because I think that detail should be in the, ultimately, the ordinance should be discussed. I guess I want to make sure everybody on staff and council is comfortable with that.
I think I can add to that. I did take a look at the strategic plan, and in the strategic plan, within the next six months, the idea was to just bring it before the Planning Commission for a discussion, and that's one of the items that Councilmember Dority brought up. We can bring that to the Planning Commission for a discussion and evaluation. The strategic plan doesn't say you have to do the final update within the next five or six months, so I think we're good on time.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to be sure we're all comfortable in getting this done, which I certainly am, but we just hadn't called that out specifically. I know of, this is one of the hot items out there, certainly I've gotten a ton of feedback on this one, so I think it's good to do.
Just actually, through the chair, if I may, question for Mr. Lance Owen. Would there be anything that would preclude us from renewing this if indeed the Westside Specific Plan was not accomplished within that period of time, that we could continue it perhaps for another six months or something?
State law would allow you to continue this ordinance for another 10 months, 15 days.
Okay, so in reality, we have actually 20 months, well, 21 months.
You do, but the law does provide that you have to proceed with some haste to study, with your studies, and document that, and it, I think staff will have to talk about how much we fast-track this particular item with respect to the rest of the Westside Specific Plan.
Yeah, I think my preference would not be to try to fast-track the Westside Specific Plan just to meet some artificial deadline that's been imposed. However, if staff and council are working on it in good faith, I think we can reasonably say that if we don't get it done within the 10 months, certainly I think, you know, we ought to be able to get a majority of it done within an 18-month window, for example, which would still fall within the 21-month.
All right, Bob or Matt? All right, we'll reopen the public hearing. You recall that we closed, we didn't close the public hearing at the last meeting, we continued it, so we will now bring it back and ask if any members of the audience would like to speak on this issue. I don't have any speaker slips. Bob, would you want this one? Okay. I had you down for number eight. Do you want number eight as well?
I just read the agenda.
All right, very good. Please give us your name.
My name is Robert Siskin, and appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight, Mr. Mayor Davids and fellow councilmen members. I'm owner of Siskin San Carlos Pharmacy at a 25 Laurel Street, and I've been there for over 21 years, and seen a lot going on in San Carlos over this period of time. When I was here two weeks ago, I posed a number of questions to the council regarding the spot zoning in the downtown and at that meeting, and a lot of them remain unanswered. Six months have passed since Bell Market announced it was closing, and I wanted to know what efforts were made and when they were undertaken by the city of San Carlos to encourage another market to move into the vacating Bell Market property.
Okay, yeah. After the last meeting, did you talk to Mr. Savay?
No one contacted me, no.
Okay. Al, can you answer this for us?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just suggest we get all of Mr. Siskin's questions, and then staff could respond to them? How's that?
All right, okay.
Okay. And I've got some copies that I can give you, so refer. Who is the city's liaison in charge of interacting with property owners as vacancies occur? And when was contact first made by the liaison with the property owner and leaseholder of the former Bell Market? When does the city deem it the right time to take a proactive role in seeking acceptable tenants? What is the current protocol of the city of San Carlos and Chamber of Commerce to attract desirable businesses into the downtown, and why isn't it working? Where does it state in the zoning ordinance what specific criteria are used to determine the acceptability or undesirability of a prospective tenant, and how is this conveyed to property owners seeking to fill vacancies? Specifically, what has been done by the city council and Chamber of Commerce since the February 12 meeting to resolve the vacancy at the Bell Market? Just have a comment to make. I believe it's a flawed assumption that businesses will remain static in the downtown business community. Economic influences on the viability of business categories and emergence of new businesses and technology continue to change the marketplace. Requiring the same business category to replace a failed one is unrealistic. When technology makes a video rental store obsolete, how will the property owner avoid a lengthy, costly, and cumbersome process of finding a tenant and getting Planning Commission approval? Free enterprise is the engine that drives our economy and democracy. At the last council meeting, city staff members stated that the zoning ordinance will allow the city to dictate what an acceptable business would be. San Carlos residents expect that their city government should make an effort to achieve a downtown business district which meets their needs by its proactive, direct involvement and open communication to anticipate problems and avert them with integrity. A dictatorial government is not in anyone's best interest. Please don't tread on our freedoms. Do not extend the interim zoning ordinance before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And you'll give copies, thank you. And we will respond in writing to those points. Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I support this ordinance because I think it behooves us to think carefully about this and take the time to plan. I hear a lot about the charm of Laurel Street and how important that is to San Carlos, and then I hear from the planning department that we should allow market forces to decide which businesses are on Laurel Street. And it seems to me you can't have both. If you want a charming downtown, you're going to have to decide what constitutes charming and who you're going to allow to be on Laurel Street. If you're going to go with market forces, then you're going to get whoever rents the building. And if it's a dollar store, it's a dollar store. If the charm of Laurel Street is important to San Carlos, and I think it is, then it seems to me that we have to set some criteria. I understand Mr. Siskin's frustration that we are farther along in this process, but I, I think we have to get going on this process and make some decisions and set up processes that will preclude this happening again. I, you know, Mr. Savay is new, and the strategic planning process is relatively new. I know Mr. Lewis has been talking since the day he was elected about, we got to have a plan, and we can't move forward unless we know where we're going, and I think he's right, and I think this is a perfect example of something that has to be done so that we aren't just doing things willy-nilly and saying, oops, the dollar store's coming. So we got to prevent that, and, but what if something else comes? We just, we have to get busy making the basic philosophical decisions and then the plans and codes that support that so that we get what we want in this town. And I think what most people want is a charming downtown.
Thank you.
And you can put all the tacky stuff over in my neighborhood on the east.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this issue?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, we have before us an ordinance. Any questions on the ordinance?
Actually, I'd just like to take a minute to respond to Mr. Siskin's comments and questions and things like that. I do appreciate the fact that you've been a longtime business owner in town, and I generally tend to agree with you that the city's position is not of a dictatorial role. However, as councilmember, I think we owe it to the citizens to show leadership. And with respect to some of the things that we can control, we can't control the use of private property above and beyond what is allowed in our general plan. And I just would like to state that I, we rely a lot on the chamber to do a lot of the economic development. We've brought on Al as well to help us with economic development. That's been a role that actually for the last couple of years has been unfortunately vacant. So... So we're looking to make some steps in that form as well. And then I think, you know, if you look at what this council has done at our strategic planning sessions, we have shown a commitment to leadership by looking at updating our West Side specific plan to try to better meet the needs of the San Carlos now versus when it was done the last time around, a couple 20 years ago. I think one of the things that hasn't been talked about either is the downtown parking plan, which I worked on back when I was on EDAC 15 years ago. And I think that, you know, we have to monitor that as well because we can bring all kinds of wonderful shops and businesses into downtown, but if there's a perception that there's not parking, people aren't going to stay and shop. So it's all part of a much larger, much broader plan, I think, than just this interim ordinance. What this interim ordinance allows us to do is buys us time to prevent what potentially could begin a downwards spiral of our downtown area simply by the turnover of one property. And I think that as a council, I mean, I've heard from a lot of residents who, you know, had heard the rumors of the types of stores that were looking at that space, and they're like, oh, my God, who do I, you know, what postcard campaign do I have to sign and things like that? So, you know, I think from my standpoint, this is really less about this council being dictator around what types of uses will be allowed in downtown, but more taking the time and the thought around generating good guidelines for what we really want our downtown to be. So I just wanted to respond to that, and I'm sure staff will get answers back to all of your questions as well.
Okay, anyone else? Matt?
I did want to speak to this a little bit similarly to Ms. Dougherty with respect to Mr. Siskin's comments. He states here about six months have passed since the Bell Market announced its closing, and what efforts have we undertaken to encourage another market to move into the vacating Bell Market property? And I know that city staff and some council members at least were aware of a market that's in our town in negotiations with Kroger, who holds the long-term lease on that property. They're not the owners. It's a family trust that owns the property, but Kroger has a lease on it. And there were discussions going back and forth. We monitored those, but as you say, we shouldn't be dictatorial. We're not going to impose ourselves on private negotiations between two parties such as that. And in actuality, what we've done with this ordinance has, again, opened the door for further negotiations with those two parties. And it was rather a surprise, I believe, to that market that was looking at that location to find out one day they're the number-one prospect for taking over the lease at that site and finding out the next day they're not, and then it's a dollar store who seems to be the number-one prospect. So I would say if anything, we're probably doing a favor to those who would like to see a market of some kind, a continued use in that spot. Now, you do say here, and I agree with you, we need to monitor changes in technology and how that might close a business, for instance, a video store. But on the other hand, I think specific to this case, it wasn't that the market wasn't failed at that location. It was more Cali Foods and the buying of Cali Foods by another larger company and so forth. It wasn't that the market was failing at that location. And because of that, that's why the existing market in town was looking at the location because they know how successful a market can be at that site. And that, those are enough comments from me on yours. I really appreciate you coming here tonight again and speaking on this. I think you make some really good points in your presentation to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, I'll say that. There's some entirely fair criticisms in some of your comments here, and it's, I think, something that councils in our strategic plan, we've talked about, and we agree that we need to get on the more proactive side of this kind of situation going on downtown. I think there's a lot of energy right now heading in that direction. That being said, I think there's some fair criticisms in your document. And I don't, I know personally, there's, it's not about things remaining static by any means. It's a matter of there, in, certainly in my opinion, being with this current situation, a threat to our kind of values and the culture that we've got going downtown and what the future of that, what I hope San Carlos grows toward. There are things that we need to put in the plan, be proactive, make sure we have some of the protocols in place. We're in the midst of trying to work that through, and I think that we will. But I thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate your long-term business in San Carlos.
Thank you. Mr. Griselli?
Not much more to add than my fellow council member said. I know myself, I'm basically a free marketer. That's how I sort of basically think. If I owned a property on the 800 block of Laurel Street, and I know Mr. Siskin does, I assume, own his property there, I'd be down here also wondering what was going to happen if I wanted to change what I was doing in my business in the future. And I think, as has been mentioned, this is not a permanent situation that we're going to, for the next 20 years, if someone wants to put a new business on Laurel Street, they have to come before the City Council. As has been said, I think the plan is the key, and we have to make sure that we periodically, again, the word static's been kicked around, we don't want to be static. We want to make sure that we look at our ordinances and look at our rules and make sure they do sort of set up for the 21st century. And this, I think, in this case, is one of those. We are taking, it seems like a long time, maybe a year, but in the span of government, that's a short time, to try to look at what we're going to be doing in the future. And coming along later on our agenda is another item for a larger piece down there, and it's the same thing. I think if we want our city to be one of the best cities on the peninsula for people to come to and enjoy, for our citizens to enjoy as well as for other people, I think we have to periodically look at what we have. And I think this is a step that we're trying to do. And again, I also appreciate the comments that have been made by Mr. Siskin and written down, and I'm hopeful that in far less time than 10 months, we can come up with a good solution that'll improve everyone's, whether they're property owners or whether they're citizens or whether they're visitors here.
Thank you. Al, do you have any other comments?
I'm available to answer specifically any of the questions that were asked or posed by Mr. Siskin at the council's, if the council needs me to, I'm available to do that.
I think, to be fair to his comments and the fact that he was here last meeting as well, it would be well if we take this offline and respond in writing to him. It might, in fact, help us formalize some of our concepts as we go forward in the West Side Plan as well and with our new economic development program. So I think it's a good start, a good thought start to move the process forward. So I think we're finished on discussion, and it's time for a motion if someone would like to move on this ordinance.
I'll move introduction of ordinance number 1385. 1385, an extension of the interim zoning ordinance of the City of San Carlos pursuant to Government Code Section 658, 58A regarding retail uses within the 800 block of Laurel Street with the amendment that I would like to see Section 1B, the date corrected to today's date.
Second?
And just for clarification, this is adoption of this ordinance. It's an urgency ordinance, and it can be adopted in one week.
Okay, so then I'm sorry, I amend my motion to, instead of introduction, it would be adoption of ordinance 1380.
All right, and we have a second?
Second, Matt, as well. Yes.
We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott? Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. The next item is Item 8A, which is adoption of a 45-day interim zoning ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for all new retail uses occupying tenant spaces greater than 2,500 square feet within the 600 and 700 blocks of Laurel Street and the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. Mr. Savay?
Honorable mayor and members of the City Council, at the March 12 council meeting, again, only three council members were present, and thus a four-fifth vote didn't exist, so the council continued this item to this meeting for your consideration. The council did hear staff presentation and also listened to public testimony. This is a 45-day interim ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for all the buildings that are 2,500 square feet or more in the 600 and 700 blocks of Laurel Street and also the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. And on the screen there, that would be the area in yellow is the, at the center of the screen is the 700 block of Laurel. The brown area is in the 600 block, and the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue are in the green there on the far left. Currently, as noted earlier, retail is permitted in these areas also, and therefore any retail use could occupy the vacant spaces for city, without city review to the appropriateness of the use in those locations either. And as part of the initial discussion of the 800-block interim ordinance on February 12, extending the urgency ordinance to the 600 and 700 blocks was discussed by the council, and staff agreed to bring this back for further consideration. And although the 800 block is an area of critical concern, there are also a number of larger buildings in the 600 and 700 blocks and also the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. And these blocks are also considered as part of the downtown retail core. There are potential vacancies in these buildings in this area of the downtown retail core, and the potential exists for a discount retailer to occupy some of these buildings also, as noted by their interest in the San Carlos marketplace. So there is a threat to retail enhancement, economic development opportunities in these blocks as well. And the recommendation is to adopt a 45-day draft interim ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for all new retail uses occupying tenant spaces greater than 2,500 square feet within the 600 and 700 blocks of Laurel Street and also the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
So basically, Al, this is the same, the content is the same as the last ordinance that we worked for the 800 block, does the same for us?
That's right. It would set up a 45-day urgency period. Within that 45 days, staff would bring back the ordinance for your consideration for an extension, just like you did earlier with the 800 block. So that would be April 9. Staff would bring it back for your consideration for an extension for 10 months and 15 days.
Are there any questions for Al? This is not a public hearing, however, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on this issue, you're welcome to come forward. Any closing comments by council? Is there a motion to approve?
I would move, is it adoption? Adoption of ordinance number 1386, an interim zoning ordinance of the City of San Carlos pursuant to Government Code Section 658, 58A regarding retail uses within the 600, 700 blocks of Laurel Street and the 1,100 and 1,200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Teagle Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. The next item is Item 9A. Just a time check, we're at 8:00. We normally run until about 10:30, so we have about two and a half hours to spend on this. If you all want to stay on schedule. Oh, that's right. Okay, Brian?
Mayor Davids, sorry to disappoint you, my staff report's not going to be quite that long. We come before you tonight to talk about the Economic Development and Economic Development Special Projects contract with the Chamber of Commerce. As council is where sitting is the Redevelopment Agency, since the start of the agency, we have an annual contract with the Chamber in these two areas. The intent is to have the Chamber spell out the tasks that they're going to perform for the Redevelopment Agency under contract. It was our original intent to have the new redevelopment person present this item earlier this year. However, due to our lack of success in recruiting that position, we thought it was appropriate to go ahead and bring this forward at this time. As the staff report notes, it is consistent with the tasks last year and actually represents a slight decrease in costs from the agreement we had with the Chamber last budget year. And as far as the overall cost of $67,804, that's well within the budget that we have for this item in the Redevelopment Agency. So staff would recommend approval. Be free, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Brian?
I would, yeah, I just want to commend, actually, before we do that, commend the Chamber for doing such a nice job in taking on the economic development, a lot of the economic development and marketing initiatives, because I know, given recent budget cuts over the last, what, seven years, staff, city staff has become slimmer and slimmer, so, and I'm not talking weight-wise. So I really, hats off to the Chamber for, and specifically Cheryl Palmering, for her leadership there for just doing a great job in promoting business here in San Carlos. So I would move, adopt, or, yeah, adoption, approval of the 2006, 2007 Economic Development Contract and Economic Development Special Contracts, Special Projects Contract with the San Carlos Chamber.
Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Matt?
I hope this is appropriate, not to bring this up as a question, but as a discussion amongst us. Is the Keep San Carlos Clean Program that we had talked about, would that, do you feel, Mr. Mayor, fit into this contract, and would we want to make it apart?
Yeah, you know, I think it would. I don't know if that was discussed as a part of the presentation. Cheryl, perhaps you can comment. This is the Keep San Carlos Clean, concentrating on downtown Laurel Street, issues related to steam cleaning, trash pickup, planting, and so forth?
Actually, we're working right now with the Parks and Recreation Department to make that happen as soon as possible. We have some plans, Barry and I, and we're moving forward with that. At this point, I believe that the city has talked about committing $5,000 to that, and I don't, we'll just donate the cost out of our staff time. I mean, we're anxious to make downtown look really good, and so I don't think, I mean, that's part of our mission is to promote business down there, so I don't see any need to add any extra finances.
It's not a budgetary impact.
It may be that as we go along and we see some need, that we can add that to the contract for '07, '08.
Sure. Very good. Okay, Matt?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything that would preclude you from coming back with a contract addendum either.
Okay.
If indeed the program grew outside of what you felt was covered within this. What I liked about this is it's very specific about what you're delivering, at what cost to the city, or on behalf of the city, really. And so if there's other things clearly that would be outside of the scope, I think I would be open to considering that in our next budget go-around and things like that.
Great, great.
All right, so I think we've got enough for the questions. Madam City Clerk?
I'm here. Councilmember Teagle Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Director.
Are we directors, sitting in this room here?
Yes, you are, I'm sorry. Director Teagle Dougherty?
Yes.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Growcott?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
And Chair Davids?
Yes.
Very good.
All right, we have one more item. We go back to his consent calendar, Item 6C. Matt, you asked that that be pulled.
Thank you. The reason I pulled this is because we had a project earlier in the year that were, the specifications required black asphalt or slurry seal, and it was, because the specifications read that way, it limited suppliers, and it was more costly. In the meantime, I had asked to have that item looked at by our then Traffic and Transportation Commission to see if we wanted to continue with the policy of only paving streets in San Carlos with black asphalt or black slurry seal. And it's the aggregate that's put in that makes it that color. And I don't know that that was ever looked at. What I was told at the time, when I asked for that, was that before another project came to us, the Public Works Director would have that issue considered by TNT and a recommendation made to council. And not seeing that done to date, I'm a little concerned about the specifications on this project and going down the same road. No pun intended.
Through the chair, just a couple of issues with respect to that. I mean, these are resurfacing projects and not slurry seal. I was advised that the issue with respect to black versus gray rock was a slurry seal project from, actually, it was a couple of years ago, I think now, because it was before I got here, I believe, that that actually was an issue. So that would be the first point. The second point relates to the issue of taking that matter to traffic, I believe that's occurred, and I believe that the Traffic Commission recommended using black rock. And I think that's been reported in the minutes. I'd have to go back and verify. I'd have to go back and verify that. I have asked Parvi that he report to you. I was not planning on doing it as an agenda item, but rather simply as a report to you with respect to their recommendation.
So as far as the item at hand, it's not a question of black or gray. It's simply asphalt.
That's my understanding. Neither resurfacing, it's not a slurry seal. The issue that rose before --
So these are patches, in effect. Pavement is taken out and replaced, but it's not a full-on covering of the entire street.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And this will come to us in, by contract eventually?
To a word of bid, yes. These are the plans and specs.
Right. Okay.
I'm sure that Parvi's is here for the word of contract evening so that he can answer any detailed questions. But in the meantime, we'll provide you with information as to what the Traffic Commission reviewed with respect to black rock. I believe that's occurred within the last couple of months.
Okay. Does that do it for you, Matt?
Yes, it does. I will talk to the mayor later about whether we want to have that pulled up, their recommendation pulled up to council and put on the agenda.
I would move adoption of consent calendar, Item 6C.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teague Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. That brings us to the end of our agenda. As we mentioned, as we started our meeting, we'd like to close in memory of Cliff Gerst, Chief of Police for San Carlos, who passed away yesterday, and we'll commit this meeting in his honor.